As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order. I ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day. And we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. First in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments tonight.
All right, no adjustments. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agendas presented. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose, like so? Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose, like so? Motion carries. All right, up next under the administrative items is the Clayton for You.
I'm always wrong. There we go. I have a pleasure to stand in for Nathaniel tonight and present to you our next video, our ongoing video series called Clayton for You. And tonight is all about what you need to do to get a permit and the permitting process.
In this episode of Clayton for You, we're navigating the world of building permits.
Before starting a home project, like a new kitchen or sunroom, check and see if you need a permit. Generally, any work that has a price tag of less than $20,000 does not require one. However, permits are always required for work involving load bearing structures, plumbing, HVAC, and electrical systems. Common projects requiring permits include decks greater than 36 square feet, carports, garages, additions, or finishing an attic or basement space. Meanwhile, no permits are required for repairing non-structural components, replacing windows and doors of the same size and location, or light-for-light water heater replacements. Homeowners can do their own work if they own and occupy the property, but licensed contractors are required for all plumbing, HVAC, and electrical projects, or any alteration costing more than $40,000.
Wondering if your project requires a permit? Call the town's inspections department at 919-553-5002. Thanks for watching and be sure to follow us on social media to keep up with Clayton for You and other town updates.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
In this episode of Clayton for You, we're navigating the world.
All right, up next is the introduction and special presentations. And tonight it is the NCS Dar proclamation. And I will give the floor to Councilmember Casey.
Thank you. This Town of Clayton proclamation, the North Carolina State Society Daughters of the American Revolution, whereas September the 17th, 2024 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition of this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to end to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, on behalf of the Town of Clayton Council, we hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Proclaim this third day of September 2024. Signed, Jody McLeod. And now I'd like to ask Ms. Fran Kieker to come up to the stage and will present this. And then she has something to talk about in an event that that's going to be happening in Johnson County for this event. Thank you.
And we are very much into history and the United States, veterans and also active military. And we support all of those. We would like to say on September the 17th, every year, we celebrate something called Bells Across America. And it is something that's done all around America. We invite you to come to the Johnston County Courthouse step and ring bells at four o'clock on September the 17th. So bring bells or some kind of noise maker. If you have colonial dress, that'd be great. Wear that also. Bring kids, grandkids, whatever. And we have a very short program. And then we all ring the bells and just celebrate that 1787 signing of the Constitution, rather. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, up next under all business is the water reclamation facility update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Louis Duffy, project manager for the town of Clayton. With me here tonight, I have Adam Sharp. He is with HDR, who is performing as owner's advisor for this water reclamation program that consists of four to five projects. And tonight, we're going to give you just an update on where we stand and where we're going in the next couple of months. So I turn it over to Adam.
Thank you. Good evening. Like Louis said, some quick program updates, a quick 90 to 120 day look ahead. And then just, you know, some flow management planning, looking now and into the future. To be honest, this has probably been the agenda we've had for the last three or four updates. So just trying to keep it, keep it the same. Big picture map here. I'm going to just put all these up. I didn't realize I had all these animations in here. But, you know, as Louis alluded to, you know, right now, we're tracking four primary projects. Obviously, the Sam's Branch Water Reclamation Facility is the big one. You're nearing about 60% completion, construction completion, a little over a year out from substantial completion, excuse me. I'm gonna let Louis, we got a couple more slides to show progress on site. Let Louis cover that one. Clayton Raleigh Pump Station, which is a pump station that's co-located with the WRF site, that facility, that expansion is under construction right now. The target of a substantial completion in November, final completion, probably after the first of the year. The Little Creek Transmission, that's the force made in gravity that's going to take all the flow from the current Little Creek plant to Sam's Branch. That construction is complete. They've got a couple punch list items, but that is a project that's complete. Little Creek Pump Station, another pump station, or another project that's complete. You know, the big thing with the Little Creek Pump Station is once Clayton Raleigh comes online, there's going to be some dialing in of controls and moving of flow to leverage the full capacity of Clayton Raleigh Pump Station. And then the big one we've been waiting for to get some hard numbers on, the East Clayton Industrial Area Pump Station and Transmission, which will take all the flow from the East Clayton Industrial Area and bring it back to Sam's Branch. That is out to bid. Bids are due in the middle of October. So we'll have some firm, firm numbers on that project, which is, which is a positive. You know, substantial completion for that one is slated for early 2026. So that's, that's the high level hit on those. If anybody has any questions, happy to, happy to take any of those. Otherwise, I'm gonna let Louis do a, a quick run through on the plant.
Yep. So this is the graphic you guys have seen multiple times showing the plant there. So this is probably the past couple weeks. You can see the bioreactor, which is that main large structure there. We have gone vertical with the walls, some of the walkways, or all the walkways are installed, starting to install some of the structural steel for the air piping and other infrastructure. The headworks, which is planned south, that's where we're going to have all the grit removal, rag removal. That structure has gone vertical. They're done pouring concrete for that. So what will come up next is installing equipment, valves, gates to help control flow. All of our tanks you see there, the, the seven tanks, those are done. They've been tested. They hold water. They don't leak. So that's good. The influent pump station, you can't really see it in this photo, but it's far back towards the greenway. That was a large pit, probably the last time I gave you guys an update. That is complete in terms of excavation and backfilling. So that was a big milestone to hit. On the right side, the admin building, you can kind of see that's coming along nicely. They, they hung drywall in there, you know, put tile in the bathroom. So it's, it's nearing completion to where we can start, you know, measuring for furniture and getting stuff moved in. The thickening and de-watering building has also progressed nicely. We hit a large milestone with pouring the second story slab where some large equipment is gonna live. So that's, that was a good milestone to hit. And then, yeah, other site work has, has progressed, like the water detention pond has been excavated, approved by the state. And so I'm gonna do a little time lapse. I don't know if some of you all have seen this, but it's. And this is just a visual, you know, kind of showing in design what we thought it would look like. And it's actually starting, you know, to look like it. So in the next three to four months, some big milestones to hit in construction is to hydraulic test that big bioreactor, fill it with water, make sure it doesn't leak, and that it performs as it should. We're starting to see a lot of process equipment being delivered, which is a big deal because some of those are long lead items. So it gives us confidence once we have those things on site. So they can start installing it, testing it, and getting it, getting the plant ready to commission it in late spring next year, maybe early summer. And yeah, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them. And, you know, the governor came to the site and they liked what they saw. So that's a big, you know, plus for the project.
I think it's great. Any questions or comments? Awesome. Thank you both for the update. Oh, okay.
You leave me with the money. You know, so I'll say, I'll say back on, well, I don't think I'm backwards. I'm going, I'm going too fast. I'm like, that was quick, right? I told you it'd be fast. I'll give, I'll give Louis and the folks out in the field that are there every day, you know, $200 million construction project, there's a lot of issues that come up along the way, you know, that they're, you know, they're tackling them head on as they come. So, you know, a lot of credit to Louis and the folks in the field, you know, both from the town, HDR, Thale, Gannett Fleming, that they're tackling these issues head on, which is a positive and very collaboratively. So again, another positive kind of collective effort by all parties involved. So just a, just a quick snapshot on, you know, overall program financials. So this is all projects as well as, you know, all we'll call a soft cost, professional services, engineers, third party inspectors and all that kind of thing. So right, you know, fortunately, you know, we do a forecast of what the costs are going to look like. So we understand from a cash flow as well as an encumbrance standpoint of when the town needs to be, have the funds in the bank to encumber, to, to go under contract. Right now, we've been tracking right along, you know, with that curve and in a relatively predictable, predictable manner, which has been, which has been a positive. You know, I would say that obviously the big one, you know, Sam's, the treatment plant, you know, you know, they were probably spending in front of our curve, but our curve is only a best estimate that we made probably 18 to 24 months ago. So in the end, they've got a contract ceiling and, you know, this just gives us an indicator of where they are in invoicing compared to what are they in construction completion. So it helps us ask hard questions and dig a little bit deeper into, to progress on the, on the site. So that's a big picture on, on just overall program financials. The other is, I know we've talked a lot about flow management. I think this is a positive. I know town's got a lot of really good partners that you work with from a utility standpoint, one of them being Raleigh Water, with, you know, had a longstanding agreement to send Raleigh wastewater for treatment. We've worked over the last couple of months, you know, in parallel with everything going on with construction to sort of enhance that agreement or that partnership, you know, to be able to, you send, to fully leverage the town's current agreement with them and sending some non, non-production related biopharmaceutical waste streams. Because that was an explicit prohibition in the original agreement. So we've worked through that at, you know, predominantly at the staff level. So that's a positive. The town's now got an industrial user permit with the city of Raleigh to, to do some of these activities of sending some of the non-production waste streams. So that's, that's just another positive on the overarching. You know, the other thing I like to always leave you with is, you know, there's a lot of stuff blocking and tackling and a lot of tactical stuff getting done right now in the ground, construction, design. You know, we are still thinking and looking and planning and doing some preliminary engineering about the future and what Phase Two will actually look like. So, you know, HDR and a couple of staff, you know, with the, with the town have really dug in on, you know, what is the liquid stream capacity extension looked like? What does the solid side expansion look like? And where does everything go? And how does it fit when we think about going from six to 10 MGD? The other part that I'm, and this is, you know, right now, we're the phase of, we've made some key decisions. Now we need to figure out what's the best way to lay it out on the site and maximize the full site, the capacity of the site. Because there's, there's only so much space and, you know, we are, we are looking beyond what is possible beyond 10 MGD so that we can know that we are reserving enough space for the future at the 10 MGD Phase Two site layout. So again, just wanted to leave you with, you know, there's a lot of good stuff going on, you know, on the site, construction, you know, the financials are tracking, you know, we're also looking, you know, looking out to the future as well. I just like to leave you with that, that message as well. Yeah. With that, happy to take any questions.
Okay, questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Thank you both very much for the update.
Great. Thanks.
Great work. Up next on the agenda is going to be the utility regionalization update.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. My trusty assistant Rich will get the PowerPoint up. My trusty assistant Rich will get the PowerPoint up. All good. All right. Thank you for the.
Well, it's good to see everybody.
My name's Lee Worsley. I'm the executive director of the Central Pines Regional Council. You may also have known us as the Triangle J Council of Governments. We're very pleased to be serving Clayton and 46 other other our local governments in a variety of different ways. And tonight I'm talking to you a little bit about water and sewer regionalization, where the ongoing conversation, because no decisions have been made. I will say that over and over again. But I really appreciate Clayton being being at the table. So a little bit about the agenda, what I'm gonna talk about, you see it up here. But basically, you know, why are we, why are you all and the other local governments in Johnston County having this conversation? Some existing collaborations, you know, why is regionalization even being discussed? And then we'll talk a little bit about potential next steps going forward. So first thing I want to say is our role as Central Pines is merely to be an entity, a neutral third party entity to help guide the conversation. We're not here to push in one direction or the other. We're merely here to help all the local governments in Johnston County, which have been at the table from the first day we've been meeting with them, which I think is wonderful, helping those local governments think about what steps you all want to take. So we're just a facilitator. The other thing is no, no final decisions have been made. We are way off from final decisions about anything formal. But I think it's really good that the conversations are continuing. I think it's important to point out, you were just talking about your reclamation facility, but I think all the local governments in Johnston County realize that water and sewer is critical to growth, health and safety and everything that your your residents need to live a good day to day life. I think the other thing that wisely the local governments in Johnston County know is that the growth is not stopping. Your community has changed dramatically over the last 10, 15, 20 years. And I think with the opening of 540 and 42 and other great things going on in this community and throughout Johnston County, that the community will continue to change. And one of the roles of local governments is to be thinking about the future of the community and those public services that you are, that you have a duty to provide. So the importance of collaboration, and that's really what this conversation is really about. It's it's not, obviously, there'll be big, big decisions maybe to be made in the future about a water and sewer authority, or maybe more formal working together around water and sewer. But really, at the core of this is to continue to talk about what you're already doing, and that's working together. And so this is about continuing to share ideas around water and sewer, continuing to talk about how the local governments can work together to share risk, how you can continue to build trust to provide better services for all your citizens, to look for more robust funding opportunities. I think we're seeing more and more at the federal and state level, regionalization or working together, being a very important component to grant funding or other funding streams from from the feds or from the state. Also, it reduces duplication and allows you all to work together and hopefully realize the scale of larger projects. So there's a lot of stuff already going on. I won't go through all of these, but Johnston County is no stranger to collaboration. That's from Clayton all the way down to to Micro. I'll be in Micro tomorrow. You all collaborate with the county, you collaborate with the other local governments, you collaborate across the county line with Raleigh and Garner and other communities. So again, this is nothing new. It's just thinking again about how to continue moving forward as the communities in Johnston County change. So I think the group, as they've met, and I really appreciate council members Casey and Sims for being at the table, Rich has been at a lot of the meetings as well, talking about, you know, how can we continue to collaborate? Or what are the other opportunities for collaboration? A lot of the communities in Johnston County have expressed an interest in regionalization because they know they have pressing infrastructure needs that just cannot wait for an authority. They know they have to start collaborating immediately. Clayton is in a little bit different position from some of the local governments that are interested in a little bit faster path. But I think it's good to have all those local governments at the table as they're talking about those next steps. And although the collaboration already exists, a lot of the, several of the communities want to formulate more robust interlocal agreements for more surety going forward. And they also want to talk about the possibility of maybe a water and sewer authority. So that's what's being discussed generally around the table when the group gets together monthly. So when we say regionalization, if I were just to come in and say, what does regionalization mean to you? I would probably get different answers. Okay, so regionalization can mean a lot of different things. It could mean simply more intergovernmental cooperation. It may mean some more interlocal agreements, or maybe a joint project, or maybe just continuing to meet to see where there's opportunities to continue to work together. It could be sharing staff. It could then go all the way across the spectrum to a self-contained authority, a water sewer authority, that would be its own legal entity, would own the assets of the water and sewer systems, have its own employees, do its own billing, make make its own decisions. Regionalization could happen anywhere along that spectrum. And the group is very open to talking about all of those options and seeing what the pros and cons are. And again, no final decisions have been made. But it's really cool to see a group of multiple local governments coming together, talking about all the options. So really, I can't tell you the last time, it's been a long time since I've sat at a table with every local government in a county talking about something like water and sewer. So it's a big deal. So the three-year goal that the group wants to at least work toward, right? You've got to have a goal to at least map out a plan. The three-year goal is to see about what it would take to form a countywide self-contained water and sewer authority. And again, the reminder is that no final decisions have been made. Every local government that desires to participate in water sewer authority will have the opportunity and has to actually make that decision at your level before being able to participate. So again, we're very early in the process. And I imagine we will be coming back to you multiple times with updates if this is the path that the group wants to really pursue. So if a water sewer authority is pursued by two or more of the local governments in Johnston County, here's the timeline that we've been talking about. And we've actually got a proposal put together that we've given to the chair of the mayor's committee and to the chair of the county commissioners to give a first look at where we would help continue to facilitate the process of bringing the local governments together to meet, establishing. So the group that's been meeting is a group of elected officials, one from each of the local governments. We would envision that that group would continue to be meet, continue to meet and be called the policy committee, making the decisions policy on where to go as a group, just like you all do for the town of Clayton. We would then also be forming a technical advisory committee that would be, would meet more often and would be made up of the technical experts from each of the local governments to really start getting into the weeds. And, you know, what does each option cost? What does it take to implement each option? What are the pros and cons to be able to give good information to the policy committee to deliberate and make decisions? The other committee that's being formed is a near-term ILA committee. You can tell that I've made these committee names up because they're not catchy. They're just, they explain what they are. Several of the communities, mostly on the eastern side of Johnston County, have expressed an interest in moving faster and actually coming together under an interlocal agreement within maybe the next six months and cooperating more closely together on water sewer. So we would be working with that group to do that. And that may actually be a good pilot group to test certain things, to see what works well, what doesn't work so well. So that's the first thing. And then you go through and during the next year, looking at organizational structures, assessing the organization, thinking about financing, looking at infrastructure. Those are all beginning to be done in the first year. Years, years two and three would be the potential adoption of interlocal agreements that may be the near term folks or maybe a larger group indicating interest in continuing to move forward with looking at a water and sewer authority and continuing to do the work, right? Continuing to look at the infrastructure, continuing to look at the legalities of everything, continuing to look at rates and how that would impact everybody, continuing to do stakeholder engagement. It's really important to keep different stakeholders informed of what's going on. So we're in June of 2027 and nothing, nothing's gotten off the ground yet. This takes a lot of planning and a lot of work to basically make decision and decisions of whether you're gonna go or not. So this is just a quick flow chart of how all that works together. I've talked about the different committees already. The policy committee, if a water and sewer authority were to be formed, the policy committee and the technical committee would basically go away. You would have an authority board who would then appoint their own committees. So the group has the following recommendations. This is sort of the charge to us, is the facilitators on what to work on next and also a good roadmap. We've been giving these presentations, the same presentations being given to every governing body in Johnston County so that everybody can see what the next steps are. So I talked about that near-term ILA committee. That's the towns of Kinley, Micro, Princeton Pine Level and the county working together to possibly formulate a ILA within the next six to eight months to begin working more closely together, continuing the existing collaborations, continuing the policy committee and forming the technical advisory committee to begin working on what it would take to do a self-contained authority. And again, through all these conversations, no matter what the final decisions that's made, the ultimate goal, I think that everybody has articulated and agrees on is that at the end, we want to ensure clean, efficient water and sewer service to all of Johnston County. And the best, and the group believes that the best way to achieve that is to really investigate the possibility of a water and sewer authority. So the immediate next steps is to basically coming to each of the local governments and making sure that each group is committed to continuing exploring the collaboration, sort of re-establishing the policy committee and establishing the technical advisory committee, beginning to work on the near-term ILA agreement with that subset of local governments and developing a more robust stakeholder engagement plan. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. As I said, Mr. Coppola has been at most of the meetings and has been valuable in giving Clayton's position, but also from his expertise, just helping to give us some good information. And then, of course, council members Casey and Sims have been at the meetings, representing your town very well, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Happy to answer any questions.
Awesome. Questions or comments? Okay.
First off, Lee, I want to thank you. You've done a fantastic job being a facilitator of the stakeholder group. You've definitely been the glue. Obviously, Clayton's made some pretty big commitments ahead of this. You know, with our wastewater reclamation facility. Obviously, we need to be mindful and intentional of what we do going forward. And I think it's important that we have a seat at the table and we can leverage the assets that we have. We can leverage the knowledge and the skill set that our staff has as well. And we need to make sure we leverage that to the benefit of the citizens of the town of Clayton. So, but thank you for what you've done, and I appreciate this. Thank you.
Awesome. Anyone else? Mr. Sims?
I just want to echo Councilman Casey's remarks. I really appreciate you being here and all the things that you're putting towards this. As I said at several meetings, of course, Clayton is in a different position, kind of way ahead of the the curve, I think prior council, and there's some of the members up here for that. But at the same time, we want to play nice in the sandbox. So we will continue to be a part of this in whatever way we deem necessary to move forward because at the end of the day, it's very important to the county overall. And I think even those that are moving forward, everybody has to understand too, I hope that they understand that they're in a different position, whatever. So they need to move very, very quickly, a little bit more faster than everybody else. But again, thank you for being here.
Thank you so much, Lee. We appreciate you very much. All right, now we're gonna jump down to staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
No report today. Just hope everybody had a good Labor Day weekend and, well, you all made it today. So couldn't have been too bad.
That's good. Next. Thank you, Rich. Town attorney? Town clerk?
No report.
Any other staff? I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one wishing to speak? I'll jump down to council comments. Hearing none, I will then jump down to the closed session request and I will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss an economic development.
Motion to go in closed session?
We have a motion in a second to go into closed session. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. Please clear the room.
All right. Is there any other business to come before this council? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night.